That you were gonna try and get them together and kick someone's, you know.
No, I ain't gonna have to.
You know.
It's everything's being one the way it should be, right?
I got this meeting Tuesday, next Tuesday, two o'clock is my acupuncturist.
I'll never understand that, two o'clock in the afternoon.
Well, normally we meet at three thirty. But because it's, it's uh, my acupuncturist.
Jess, are we on? Are we on?
Are we on?
You guys ready?
I'm ready.
Yeah.
Alright, I will call to order the planning board meeting for Tuesday, October twenty seventh. Is there anybody here to speak to something that's not on the agenda? Alright, uh, minutes from our October thirteenth meeting, board members have a chance to look at them?
Make a motion we accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Alright, moving right along, uh, no A and Rs, no old business, uh, first new matters, uh, site plan approval for thirty-one Union Street. Is there somebody here to speak to that? You wanna come up and address the board? You can go right up there to the podium.
How are you going?
Good, how are you?
I'm Callie Anderson.
Alright, uh, you wanna give us a brief overview of what you're trying to do?
Um, well, I had a spa products company lying with my mother for ten years. And we haven't had any complaints with our spa products, so my mother gave me my own spa product line. So that's what I wanted to do is open up, like, an alternative spa product line in East Hampton.
Okay. This is at thirty-one Union Street?
Yeah.
Where are the products produced?
Um.
Will they produce, be produced in, at thirty-one Union Street or somewhere else?
Yeah. Yeah.
Where?
In New York, at my mother's house.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um.
The two additional tenants, what's that about?
He said they want an overhead view.
Sure, I'll just pass it down, just an aerial view of the property. Do you need a copy of your application?
No, I have it.
Did you see that?
You mentioned in your application that you have two tenants who are subletting part of the space, can you tell me a little bit about that?
Yeah, my friend was thinking about subletting some of the rent with me. He owns Fuller Margula Homes and his dad owns the other establishment.
So it's gonna be office space, is that right?
Well, I was thinking about renting them out, like, at least three hundred square feet each.
For commercial purposes?
Yeah. Just like a little office area.
And the, but that's what they're gonna be limited to is office use sort of for their administrative stuff, or they, yeah?
We would need to know the, the inform, more information about the subletters, right?
Yeah.
What their hours of operation would be.
Does that ever make sense?
They would operate underneath my hours.
The long one, okay. Um. Yeah, Jessica, so that would cover her use, but if there's any other use that the other tenants need, they're gonna have to come with their own application if it's not something they could buy, right?
Uh, unless it's discussed tonight and permitted tonight, if, if the applicant has a sense of who those additional tenants could, are going to be, or what use category those tenants might actually be under, um. And that would be helpful, and that could expedite things, otherwise, you know, they would need to come forth for a site plan approval if, um, if it's unclear on who the tenants might be.
Okay, do you, do you have leases with these people already, or?
I haven't even leased the space, I'm just trying to make sure I can make my money in the space before I even put a dollar into the space.
Yeah. Gotcha.
It needs flooring, it needs, I've already talked to the landlord, he has done everything to make it safe enough to code.
Would making these products generate any waste?
No, actually, my products are, like, environmentally friendly, they're all pretty much from the earth.
And, did you receive the comments?
They're carbon free.
Did you receive the comments from the, uh, Health Department?
Yeah. Yeah, I talked to her two seconds ago.
Okay.
And she didn't have any problems with it because all my ingredients are FDA approved and certified vegan and vegan.
Okay. Gotcha.
Yeah.
Alright, what's this, did you quite, were you able to read that?
Yes, as well making the space that's safe, what was unsafe.
I'm not sure what that refers to.
I think it's the comment at the end of the application, which is made the space safe, but. Any questions?
None, seems straightforward.
So there's, because they're not altering the structure, Jessica, there's no need for the, um, off street parking, right?
Anthem access? No.
Alright.
I'm, I motion to approve the application for site plan approval special permit for thirty-one, um, uh, help me, thirty-one.
Union?
Yeah, Union.
Can we just approve the spa products?
Yeah, I think that's.
I agree with you.
Ask that any additional tenants come back to, come before the planning board or provide additional information.
That's important for you to hear.
So, so, we're, we're gonna approve your business, but we need to have more information about any additional tenants that might be sharing the space with you before we can just approve their use, okay?
Alright, that's feasible, yeah.
Alright, so a motion to.
So is that a condition, so just to be clear, I just wanna be clear on the decision, is that a condition for the decision?
Motion to approve.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That would be a condition on your motion.
On the motion, yes.
Yes, on the motion.
Yes.
Um.
Do you need me to repeat it, Jess?
No, I just wanted to be clear that that was a condition to the permit, that's all.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, okay. Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, so what does that mean?
Uh, it means that the planning department has fourteen days to draft a decision, and then once you have the decision in hand, you are all set.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you, same here.
Alright. Next up is, uh, one fifty-six North Hampton Street, Megan Earl, is someone here for that? Hi, can you tell us your name and address?
Peter Earl, uh, it's one fifty-six, uh, North Hampton Street.
Okay. Anyone explain to us a little bit about what you're trying to do here?
Uh, we're putting in a, a beautiful little fitness facility.
Is this where Nikki D's?
It is.
We're next door.
Next door, yeah.
So, in your application, you talk about, um, limiting members to forty members at a time, is that correct?
Correct.
So how do you plan on doing that?
Uh, we, it's limited by the number of, uh, pieces of equipment we have.
But how do you, I mean, how do you propose that you would, you know, stop that forty-first person from coming in if you're forty already there?
Uh, we've, we have a small, uh, fitness facility in Amherst, basically the same size, and we've never had a, a problem with overcrowding.
Okay, so you, it's more that you just don't anticipate having more than forty people at a time?
Correct.
And, and I noticed you have some parking onsite and then some of the overflow is next door at Nikki D's, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, I noticed the one thing, I, if I missed it, you don't have. Unless I missed it, handicap parking?
Oh, um. You did have one on there, um. It, 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 they, they will be, it's, it'll be actually, we're only, uh, supposed to, or required to have one, uh, we're gonna have two centered at the front doors.
Unless it was written on there. Front doors?
In front of them.
See the Board of Health and Fire Department have no code.
Yeah.
See that bit in there about the sidewalk, I'm not sure what's.
Right, I missed that.
We can do.
What side?
Uh, there's a note in here, uh, that there's no sidewalk on the North Hampton Street side.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what you do about that.
Um. Right. You talked about replacing the lighting that's there in the parking lot, what do you have planned for that?
We're adding, uh, three dome lights to the front of the building, uh, beautiful, uh, very respectable lights, um. It's got a, a, I believe a forty amp, um, high-powered light on the, uh, pole in front of the building already, and then there's two, uh, existing lights in the back that we're just gonna put into, uh, uh, we're gonna add, uh, high-powered, um, floodlights.
Is there anybody else here to speak to this project?
Hi, I, I was wondering, you were asking about the light.
You wanna come up here and just introduce yourself?
I wanna make, like, the lighting, we're actually using the same kind of lighting that Dunkin' Donuts has, all the nice arched ones.
Can you just state your name and address just for the record?
Nicholas Dupre.
Yep.
East Hampton, eight Granby. So, the lighting is the kind of same ones that have a, I'm, she has, had Dunkin' Donuts, the little swing ones, we're gonna put four in the front, pitch them down. They have it at National Felt, too, at National, uh, right next door, too. They're decorative lights, they're not flutter power lights.
Yeah.
There is a light, like you said, coming from a post from the, the electrical company.
Yeah.
That just glows very lightly, it's been there for thirty years, we're not taking that out, so kinda, are you concerned about lighting, or are you concerned about safety of the people walking in, I?
I mean, I guess both, I, I, I was just noticing it said that he was gonna replace them or add some lighting.
Yeah. Yeah, there's some floodlights in the front of the building pointing towards the street, and we're changing them with the decorative ones, that, like I said, at Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah. Okay.
Very tasteful. He does have different plans for the parking, we had, we got up to fifty-two in the parking, he's got a map here for that, so I cover way beyond what you have, he's got a new map.
There's a new layout that has fifty-two?
It, it, it's either or at this point, uh, cause he has overflow anyways, I, I just made a secondary, just to make sure that we had it covered.
But we have fifty-two on site, and you're concerned about the sidewalk going down, I don't think we'll ever use my place at all either, I mean, I just don't think the sidewalk.
I see a note that it said you, you determined that you needed sixty spaces, so you've got fifty-two and then the overflow for the other.
We have fifty-two, right, and the overflow, but we'll never have that many people there.
What are the hours?
Is that the door?
What are the hours? What hours are you gonna have?
Excuse me?
The hours.
Four in the morning until ten.
And the, for the.
Now, if it's four in the morning, you say some, are you gonna have someone there?
It's swipe in access, uh, the lights on, the lights are on.
You have a, so if someone wants to come in at four in the morning, they just have to swipe and go in.
Um, one more question, just about the, the use of the facility, it's just gonna be the fitness equipment, will there be any other uses, like, there won't be any food or?
No.
Juice or anything like that?
No food or drink?
Nope.
Are there hours when it's staffed?
Yes.
What are those hours?
Uh, approximately eight in the morning till noon, and then around three to about eight.
So there's no one there from four to eight?
There won't be anybody there from eight until closing, and then, uh, from four in the morning till about eight.
And is that seven days a week?
Seven days a week.
So during those times, members would have like an access card or something, they could just get in and use the equipment?
Correct. Correct.
So anybody else here who has any comments about this?
I motion to approve the site plan approval special permit for one fifty-six North Hampton Street.
I'll second that.
Further comments, questions? All in favor?
Uh.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Alright.
No conditions?
No, as stated in the application, I guess.
Nothing, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Alright. Ready to transition?
Good luck out there.
Alright.
Folks, I'm gonna give a moment for Jesse to leave.
Do you wanna? You wanna state for the record, Jesse?
I'm gonna.
Yeah, I'm, I'm stepping aside, I'm gonna recuse myself here, and Jim Zarvis is gonna take over for the meeting, so.
Alright, everybody.
Alright, hold on. These additional, this is a copy of the application, I have a few extra copies if you need them.
So you're handing those out, I just wanna let everyone know, uh.
I, I would like to state for the public, so they know what you're gonna say, if you wanna just hold on a second, okay?
Are you asking?
This is a memorandum that came as a supplemental memorandum to the planning board in advance of the meeting.
She handed out the last meeting.
From, um, the attorney that's representing the applicant.
Okay.
That's right. Got your hand.
I also have a letter, um, that was sent in by Counselor Dan Rist, um, and his comments regarding the application.
I already, I already read it, I already read it.
Alright, you're getting another one just in case you need to reference it. Recycle it at the end of the morning.
Okay, thank you.
And finally, I have, um, some, uh, information that was provided by.
I need to remember this one.
Okay. I believe it's the first packet.
No, I don't have it, thank you, Jess.
And there's additional supplemental stuff to mention.
My god, this is, yeah.
Uh. Oh, I got this, too. This was on the internet.
Is this a project? Or can I, something separate?
Yes, keep your printables up. Yeah.
They're not full, lady, okay, um. I believe, so most of you have a copy of the September eleventh special permit decision.
Yeah.
I'll leave them here in case you need them. Uh, this is a chronology for the East Hampton Planning Board, provided by Bert Thervr.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. We have a copy of the planning board minutes from September sixth, two thousand eleven, I believe I emailed these to you as part of the information.
Yeah.
And I believe I also sent you a copy of the site plan, does anybody need, this is the original site plan?
Yeah, I have a copy of that, but the other one.
The planning board minutes?
Yeah.
Anybody else need a site plan, the original site plan?
We do.
Okay, extra copies over here, this is a copy of the planning board minutes from nine twenty-seven, two thousand eleven, I believe this was also emailed to you, does anybody need a hard copy?
Nope.
Pictures over here if you need.
What's that?
I think that's everything.
Thank you, Jess. Okay, little landslide there.
Sorry.
It's okay. So I just wanna give everyone a heads up about how we're gonna proceed, I know there's gonna be a lot of folks here that are gonna wanna talk. Um, we're gonna start by having the, um, the applicant and their representatives come forward and talk a little bit about what their, uh, requested amendment to the special permit is. Then the board's going to ask questions, uh, we, I'm sure, have some prepared already. Once we've gone through that process, uh, we have a checklist that we go through typically in this kind of thing, and we've answered those questions. We're gonna turn, I will turn, and look to see if anyone else wants to comment on the issue, so that'll be the point at which you can give your feedback and let us know, uh, what your opinions are. During this entire process, I ask that people, uh, use respect and brevity. So, would the applicant and any representatives like to come up and tell us a little bit about your request for a amendment?
So, before we begin, I, just there, one more thing I'd like to mention, which is just to clarify what we're actually looking at tonight, which is a proposed amendment to the special permit that was issued to Fort Hill in two thousand eleven. That's the only document that we are, um, considering tonight, just to clarify for folks, um, what we're looking at.
Very good.
That will come up again.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Tebow, I'm an attorney with Dority Wallace Pillsbury and Murphy, and I'm here as counsel for and on behalf of Fort Hill Brewery, um. As you know, uh, Fort Hill submitted an application for amendment of its permit, its special permit that was issued in two thousand eleven. Um, we're here tonight to ask for some clarification of the language that's in the permit. Uh, as I'm sure you're aware, there have been some complaints, um, about the operations of the brewery, and, uh, I'm sorry, I do have, I do have another handout, uh, Jessica, if I could just. It includes a copy of the memorandum, but, um, on the top is something that you haven't received yet, which is just a, uh, a summary of the Fort Hill, the police log reports that have come in relation to Fort Hill from, from, uh, Sep-, uh, August through September, mostly on Friday and Saturday nights, uh, related to noise complaints, none of which were substantiated, uh, by the police, and in fact, in several instances, they explicitly found, said that they, they didn't think there was any excessive noise going on. Um, nonetheless, uh, Fort Hill, being located in an industrial zone next to a residential district, wants to proactively make sure that its permit, uh, clearly states, um, what it's allowed to do, or at least doesn't create ambiguity. So, Fort Hill applied for its manufacturing permit in the industrial district back in two thousand eleven. It's licensed by the state and the, um, also has local licensing as a farmer brewer. In conjunction with its manufacturing permit, it has on-site a tasting room, um, where it sells its own product on-site, uh, growlers for taking away, as well as pints of beer for consuming on the premises, uh, the pints of beer, the beer obviously was produced on-site in its manufacturing facility. It's, it's licensed to conduct these activities, and Fort Hill doesn't believe that they are in, uh, out of compliance with its permit by conducting these activities. So when you look at what the permit says, it, it has in there some language that the brewery will not include a pub or retail component. It also describes the facility size, um, some parking issues, it says it will have a bottling operation. And this language is not in the conditions section, but is really in the narrative portion of the permit, which describes what they're applying for. Their principal use in the industrially zoned district was as a manufacturing facility. Uh, coupled with that, they would have a tasting room, and as the law changed, allowing them to pour beers in that tasting room, they then applied for that, and so they sell some of their product on-site for cons, on-site consumption, they've, they've historically sold their product for off-site consumption. Um, the actual conditions imposed by the permit relate to minimizing tree removal and, um, something related to stormwater. And those don't really seem to be at issue here. Um, the brewery is, is not prohibited from conducting retail, the, the narrative portion was merely a recitation of the fact that it was applying for a manufacturing facility license, um, under that use in the table of uses of the zoning ordinance. Um, manufacturing being defined as general manufacturing, not commonly considered hazardous or noxious, or described in the table of uses. Uh, Fort Hill, we don't believe that the sale of these pints of beer to be consumed on premise qualify as retail, and the reason for that is, going back to the zoning ordinance, um, there is no definition in the zoning ordinance of retail. But it does refer to a diction, it refers you to the general dictionary, and then it says in terms of retail trade and manufacturing and wholesale uses to go to the standard classification manual, uh, by the US Census Bureau. So when you go to that source, um, retail is defined, and, and they also give several characteristics that are prominent in, in re, that characterize retail facilities or, um, the trade group of retail as it's classified in that manual. Um, a couple of those characteristics include things that really exclude, when you look at those characteristics, Fort Hill is excluded from, from falling within retail. So, they describe retail as a, a place, an establishment that may process its products, but such processing is incidental or subordinate to selling. They state that retail is generally characterized as some, uh, an establishment that buys or receives merchandise as well as sells. And while they note that not every characteristic is prominent in every retail establishment, um, these two clearly, Fort Hill does not do either of these. Uh, in fact, when you look down at the description in the manual, they expressly call out the example of a farmer who produces or grows food on-site, or raises animals too, I suppose, and then has a retail stand to, to sell those goods on-site, and that is not considered retail, within that retail classification, because the sale is really incidental or subordinate to the production, and that's what's going on at Fort Hill as well, where the sale of the beer is incidental to the production.
Excuse me.
Uh, when you look in the classification manual further, under the definitions within the manufacturing or wholesale uses of division, it has in there malt beverages, which is in the manufacturing division, and that's a, an establishment that is primarily engaged in the manufacture of malt beverages. So, Fort Hill, its primary, its principal purpose is to produce and manufacture beer, it, the selling is really incidental to that. Um, even if you consider the activities of selling the pints of beer as retail, uh, as qualifying as retail, when you look at the other definitions in the zoning ordinance, I think will, I think, you'd have to find that it's allowed. So, under the definition of manufacturing, you have a facility primarily for heavy and, or light industry, um, and then they, it notes incidental activities such as storage, offices, wholesale sales, retail sales, and et cetera, are permitted. So, even if you consider this retail, we feel that it is permitted as a manufacturing use. So, nonetheless, we still have this issue of neighbors complaining, and, um, Fort Hill recognizes that. It recognizes that it is located in an industrial district, and it's bordering a residential rural C district. Um, and that you, planning board, are tasked with making sure that these, they can coexist with their neighbors. And, so, Fort Hill is amenable to having some conditions im- imposed on it. And as you know, in the memorandum we submitted. And as you know, in the memorandum we submitted, we suggested some conditions. But one thing that I think is worth pointing out is the fact that Fort Hill is in an industrial district. It's located there, that's what it's zoned for. It's not, it wasn't grandfathered in after some long other process. And the residential rural C district, which it borders by special permit, also allows some pretty offensive uses. They allow a police firing range could go in there by special permit, not in industrial, but in residential rural C. You could put an auto repair shop in that residential district by special permit. So, considering that Fort Hill has a manufacturing use that's not hazardous or noxious, is located in the industrial use, industrial zone, we're asking you to just keep those things in mind, as well as the fact that they are a business, and they are competing with other breweries, and other breweries which have tasting rooms and pouring permits and hours of operation to allow people to come and taste their goods and have a good experience at the brewery, so that they'll then buy those goods at the store. To help resolve these issues, Fort Hill is proactively asking for the permit to, the ambiguity to be resolved in the permit about the retail language, and has proposed some conditions. So, in terms of clarifying that retail language, in the memorandum, we requested that after that sentence that says, "but will not include a pub or retail component", we add, "except incidental retail permitted by a manufacturing facility under the terms in the zoning ordinance." The permit in the narrative portion talks about parking, and that Fort Hill would provide 20 parking spaces. As built, Fort Hill can accommodate more than that, and it is requesting that the language reflect that parking will be provided for 60 vehicles. In terms of.
Can you repeat the number, please?
Sure, 60.
Thank you.
In terms of operating and to peacefully coexist with its neighbors, it has proposed some conditions or limitations on its operating hours for outdoor public activities. And those are in the supplemental memorandum. Should I, should I repeat them? Okay.
People in the audience haven't seen the memorandum, so.
So, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and four Sundays a year, from 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And those would be not applicable to charitable or civic association events, but just kind of general public coming and going. As we discussed, as I brought up before, Fort Hill does not feel it's contributing to excessive noise. That does not mean that it is a silent neighbor, but it means that they're not causing excessive noise in the community. Nonetheless, they support a reasonable standard, and they feel they will fall within that standard. So, we suggested a condition be imposed that states "noise shall be limited to no greater than 10 decibels above background levels as measured from Fort Hill Road." Finally, Fort Hill does not believe it's responsible for traffic complaints on the street. While there are people going to and from the brewery, the brewery is located not that far down Fort Hill Road, and you have various other destinations which are much farther away, which would generally cause people to not drive down a street slowly. If you, if you know you're going to Fort Hill, you're looking for Fort Hill. If you know you're going to the Rod and Gun Club, or Arcadia to drop your kid off at summer camp, or the, on Friday nights, to the Oxbow water ski shows or firework shows, you are bypassing Fort Hill Road pretty quickly. That is your straightaway cut-through, and Fort Hill would support traffic calming measures. I don't believe this is the appropriate board to bring that to, but if the city council wanted to impose some speed bumps or radar signs, Fort Hill would support that, but it does not feel that it is responsible for traffic increases or unsafe drivers on Fort Hill Road. And that's it. I don't know if you have questions for me, or Eric is obviously up here, too.
Did you want to make a statement as well, Eric?
I guess a general statement, perhaps, as an overview. We went through the legal aspect, and maybe from, I guess, from someone who's running this operation. I'd like to think that, I guess we're about to hear that, you know, I've been described as, you know, snookering people, this, that, and the other. But I guess when, you know, I live in East Hampton, I spend a good deal of my time at Fort Hill Brewery. I understand that we're a community, and when I made the business decisions to, you know, operate during our limited hours, I was very much in terms of respect for the neighbors. We opened, we're open to the public from 4:00 to 7:00 on Thursdays and Fridays, and 2:00 to 6:00 on Saturdays. The other breweries in town, they've got much longer hours, I believe. Thursdays and Fridays, they're open from maybe 4:00 to 9:00, and Saturdays and Sundays, they're open till 9:00 o'clock as well. So, in understanding that I am in a, you know, in an industrially-zoned block, you know, that is bordering neighbors, you know, I sort of took it upon myself to put on, you know, these restrictions. Because honestly, we shut down at 7:00, or 6:00 o'clock on Saturdays. The public's like, "we want more," but, you know, we say that it's over, and then I drive by a abandoned building in New City Brewery, and their parking lot's full. You know, so we very much could be generating more revenue, and, but, you know, I am trying to be respectful. There have been other complaints about noise regarding our production. We have a glycol chiller, that it is, I guess, in the grand scheme of things, it's sort of the perfect storm, it hits one of our neighbors. But we did make a considerable amount of investment. We did put up a fence, and I installed that $6,000 worth of noise suppression in order to dampen this noise, and I think that we substantially reduced the noise by upwards of 70%. The town did not ask me to do this. I did this upon my own desire to try to make things right with the neighbors, and it, I'm trying to be understanding, you know, but unfortunately, with the competition in Massachusetts, when we originally applied to the special, for the special permit, the pouring license did not exist. And unfortunately, as the state introduced this license, the vast majority of other breweries in the state have also applied and gotten the license, as well as the other two breweries in town. And quite frankly, you know, we have to use our brewery as our number-one marketing, you know, resource. When people come to the brewery, they take a tour, Sue makes them laugh, and, you know, that is, that is a very, that's a very important part of our marketing, and we simply would not be able to survive if, you know, all we could do, I guess, under the current definition, you know, that we're not even allowed to sell growlers or T-shirts. So, you know, there's no way in hell we can really compete with abandon or New City if we have to, you know, allocate staff just to give away, you know, free samples. And not only won't it be, you know, economic for us, but it'll also give us sort of a lousy image from the consumer, because they'll come visit the brewery, they'll be like, "ah, you know, down, down the road, we can get full pints, we can get T-shirts, we can get growlers." And we're gonna have to say, "sorry." And, you know, that's, unfortunately, we do employ people. You know, I wish that money wasn't an issue, but this tasting room does help generate revenue. And unfortunately, if we have to, you know, cease that operation, you know, fortunately, we're gonna have to fire some people, which is sort of a bummer, because we started, just started to get things rolling a little bit, and it would really impact our business from a revenue standpoint, and more, more so from a marketing perspective. Because people really do come to see our brewery, they, you know, it is a pretty magnificent system. We did invest a lot of time and money in order to have such a facility, and we want to show it all.
Thank you, Eric.
I have a question.
I think it's time for questions. Go ahead, start it up, Chuck.
I have a question on the amount of vehicles that you are going to incorporate. 60, probably gonna wind up 60-plus vehicles. I've been up that area. How are you gonna control the parking in that area? Are you going to have a separate area for parking only? Or are they gonna park, and some people are just park healthy, skelter to go in there. That's why I just want to know how controlled the parking will be.
Well, for the most part, every weekend, the parking has worked right, except the one time that my mother sort of parked like a jerk. I don't want to throw my mother under the bus, but she did a ridiculous job and completely messed up the flow of the parking lot. But we do have sort of an L-shaped parking lot. We've got parking up towards the building and towards the fields. And I would say that 99% of the time, the parking has not been an issue.
Will there be someone at least to monitor that every once in a while to see how the parking issues are?
When my mother parked incorrectly, I believe Sue reprimanded her.
I'm not talking about your mother.
It's gravel, it's gravel right now, right? Do you have any plans to make that paved or striped?
Well, given, we've sort of seen the water management within that area, and it, we, it's on a very sandy soil. So, by having the gravel parking lot, it almost eliminates any sort of erosion that is sort of going down towards the river. So, it is not an immediate concern, I guess, from the standpoint of maintaining the parking lot, it is not an immediate concern to turn that into a pavement.
I agree with that.
I think, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, as a follow-up, I would be interested personally in seeing an actual schematic of the proposed parking, because I think it's hard to just, you know, give an okay for this much additional parking without seeing.
Truthfully, it wouldn't even change from what our current parking lot is. We would not be adding any additional parking lot. It's sort of the original design, and we had the pervige of 20 parking spots, and that's why we're sort of just acting, asking for clarification. Because we would not be necessarily, we wouldn't be building more parking. We would just leave it the way it is.
I understand that, but I mean, honestly, it's hard for us to say 60, we don't even know. I mean, we know there's gravel around that area, but how do you know it can support 60?
This is a routine thing that we request of applicants to, so that we can see.
Okay, so, I think that, however, proceed, that's something that we'll want to see.
So, you want to revise site plan, is that what you're asking for?
Yeah, show, demarcating the 60 proposed parking spaces.
Because what's here only shows the 20 parkings.
So, okay, there's that. We have some language, I think, that we need to resolve, which is sort of the primary request here. There's retail, there's the word bar. Does anyone want to comment on their thoughts about the description that was in the original permit for retail?
I gotta say something here. Under the original special permit, what it says, "the facility will produce an alcoholic beverages, it may host tours, but will not include a pub or retail component." What do you think that means?
So, a pub is defined differently in the licensing.
No, I understand all that. What do you think, what do you think we were saying when we said we don't want any retail at the pub? What do you, I mean, at the brewery? What do you think we were trying to say back then? In your, in your mind, what do you think we were trying to tell everybody? It's pretty crystal clear to me. I only went to high school, I'm not a lawyer. But when somebody tells me no retail, that's no retail, period.
I'm not sure.
That's what we, that was the intent of the board at that time.
You were, you were a part of the board.
Yes, I was.
You, you too?
Right, but what I'm saying is that the way retail is defined in the zoning ordinance, what they're doing doesn't qualify as retail.
If it doesn't qualify as retail, then we don't need to clarify the ambiguity about, and say that it is.
It's not, it's not a condition. They're here because.
Maybe we could take our special permits and send it to our town solicitors so they can look at it. And then we know where we actually stand, not come back three or four years later and say, "oh yeah, whatever you guys come up with, that's not legal, that's not this, or that's not that." We know what we wanted to say.
Well, again, you didn't put it in the conditions, you put it in the description field. They don't have to follow up.
It is, it is clear that there's an ambiguity, and I think we understand how it was created, because it's not in the conditions section of the permit. However, I do think that it's, you know, the intent of the board at the time does have bearing, and it is important, and, you know, we need to keep it in mind.
Agreed.
It was probably an oversight of the board at that time not to include it in our condition.
So, why was it included? I mean, why, why were you thinking no retail at the time?
Well, the wording was there anyways.
Say again?
The wording was there.
Yeah, but why? Why would you say that to them?
Say what?
No retail.
Because they didn't want to sell any beer there. Pretty clear.
No, at the time, of course, they couldn't, because they didn't have the.
What do you think the neighbors signed up in that whole thing for? We got the neighbors up there, we got him up there, he agreed to the, to the conditions. The neighbors were up there, they were happy with it, he was happy with it, because it wasn't gonna be selling any beer, that means when we had 20 cars going up there to go in there and check out his facility. So, there wasn't any need for 80 cars or any more cars, and that was gonna be a real quiet operation, and what has turned it now, with the state getting involved, and what has turned into what it's turned into.
But tastings were part of it.
Yes.
Tasteings.
Yes.
So, they could give beer, just not pay for it.
Absolutely.
So, what you were trying is to prevent a bar atmosphere, where people were staying up to 2:00 AM.
Right, exactly.
But that's not what they've got. So, why?
I'm, can I add something also? When you look at the purpose of the application, the principal use was for a manufacturing facility. It wasn't for a pub, and it wasn't for a retail bar. That was not the principal use of, for the reason for the application.
So, we have a definition for bar.
Yes, and it refers to principal use only.
Exactly, and I'll read that if that's okay to be exact. I agree, it says, "an establishment." I should say, this is from our zoning ordinance here in East Hampton. It says, "A bar is an establishment serving alcoholic beverages in which the principal business is the sale of such beverages at retail for consumption on the premises." Principal business. Would you say that serving alcoholic business is your principal business? So, it's not a bar. That much is evident. We don't have a definition.
I know what we wanted to do back then, okay? You can twist it any way you want. I know what we wanted to do, I know what the train of thought was. So, you can step over there, and you can twist it around, and do anything you want to do. I know what the intent was by us on the planning board.
Let's all be respectful to everyone on the planning board. I understand that this is a contentious issue, but we don't need to be yelling at each other.
I'm not yelling at, I'm only trying to explain to, I know what the intent was with the five people on the board at the time. I know what they're trying to get at.
And to be honest, I am questioning that intent. All right, does anyone else?
So, let me, there's a lot here. I do, I personally, just to say this now, I am inclined to take more time to review the additional materials that were just given us, that we obviously haven't had a chance to review. So, my, my feeling right now is that we should continue, you know, continue to hear public comment tonight, and then continue the hearing to make a decision at a later date. That's where I'm at right now. But I do have some additional questions. Another thing I would like to know is what the square footage of the tasting room is, and I'm asking partly because that has a bearing on parking, and also would speak to incidental versus principal use.
The tasting room is approximately 20% of the building, or 2,000 square feet. And the buyer, we've got two licenses for, I guess, occupancy. And I believe one is 89, and the other is 109.
Can I just clarify on the occupancy numbers, because I did check with the building inspector. I think I put it in my memo to you, but just for the public to understand. So, the 80, I think it's 87, is for the tasting room only, and 108 is for the entire building as a whole.
So, you're aware of the limiting numbers. Do you have a plan for? So you're aware of the, the limiting numbers. Do you have a plan for controlling that?
Uh, I think that eighty-seven people in that little space, uh, I think people would naturally not wanna be there.
So.
Nope.
And they would go outside.
I don't know that that's a great answer.
Yeah, I mean.
There've been instances where we, you know, it has been, you know, warful and people have told me that they just decided to not go in that day and.
So an occupi- an occupancy limit is, uh, not just kind of a, well, we're over this day. It's not supposed to happen. So, I mean, that's, you need to have a plan. I think if, I think it is likely, and I agree with you, that we're gonna wanna get some additional, additional information and postpone this. Um, and that's something we'd wanna see as a plan for how you are going to assure us that you won't be going over that occupancy limit. Do you have any more?
Uh, yeah, let me just take a look. So in the, I believe it was in the proposed, the original proposal, not the memorandum, there was a mention of decibel reading measurements that had been taken and I was curious as to what method was used because the health department commented that using a smartphone app for a decibel measurement was not, would not sort of pass muster. So I'm curious how you measured the sound.
Uh, I don't know the name of the exact device, but it was, um, it was a, I guess, an industrial, you know, zone decibel reader and we measured, uh, I guess, volumes of sound between forty and fifty decibels. Um, obviously, this is not done by a professional, um.
Yeah, all we have is hearsay all around, from the complaints, from those in support that I've heard from that said that it hasn't been loud, your own, all of it's hearsay. We don't have any.
We should have.
And you're proposing ten decibels to, you're proposing to limit yourself to ten decibels even though you are measuring forty to fifty decibels?
No, ten decibels of, but like, uh, uh, ten, forty decibels is like the sound of a quiet bedroom. Uh, fifty decibels is the sound of, uh, an office. Um, so ten decibels.
Above the background level.
Above, background level.
As measured from Fort Hill Road.
If, if I may, I, I'd like the board to think about how the city would measure that if there was a complaint.
Okay.
Yes.
And we don't have a noise ordinance, right?
You know, what department, uh, as far as I know, we don't have the technology to measure.
Yep.
Okay.
The police department may. I don't believe the zoning enforcement officer does, so.
The health department?
The health department went out.
She goes out with her own. I don't, does she, she had a thing?
She actually has a meter that she used.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. For the other, for the other application? Okay.
Have you considered additional sound mitigation? Um, for example, I mean, this is just my own, I like, sort of sense from going by the site. You've got a pretty good buffer of trees on the Fort Hill Road side of the property, but the, I guess, the east side of the property, um, that's perpendicular to Fort Hill Road is very open and I wonder if that's contributing to some of the sound carrying over to the neighbors. And I wonder if there could be something done that would prevent some of that sound from escaping over the field and went to the other houses.
Plantings.
Yeah, plantings, a wall, up there and something like that.
Well, in the springtime, I had proposed a, uh, a plan for a patio in the back.
Mm-hmm.
And granted, the way that, 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 we do have a tin building, um, and by having, you know, a patio in the, in the rear corner of the property, I think that would distance itself substantially away from the neighbors and, um, the building would work as a facade. Uh, but that idea was not, um, rejoiced.
Because of expense or?
Uh, because of concerns.
Oh, yeah, oh, the, I see what you're saying, yeah.
From, from concerns from the neighbors.
I mean, obviously, there's noise complaints and there's disagreement as to how noisy it is or not, but as you stated, we do try to, to bridge the gap between promoting, uh, business and, and, and successful ventures and meeting the needs of the community. And additional planting, I think, or some, as you say, sound mitigation would be, I think, an excellent, uh, something to, if you could bring to us next time. I don't, you know, I'm not at this point saying that we're requiring it, but I'd love to hear any ideas you have. Um, so we've talked about parking, we've talked a little bit about the terminology, and do you have any more?
Go, go ahead.
Well, the outdoor stuff, um.
Yeah.
So, the hours there for outdoor stuff are gonna be the same, uh, as for what you proposed before the two to eight. Am I getting that right? Two PM to eight PM? Um, and right now, your music is inside, is that right?
Uh, it's during the summer. Uh, we had it on the porch. Uh, the porch was licensed, um, by the liquor board as part of our area where the public can gather. Uh, so in the summer, we had music outside as well.
Um, and, uh, how is that going to affect sound? I mean, clearly, that's, when it's outside, that might be the times in which there's, there's been complaints, I think. No conditions?
Uh, well, we, we, we do have the police report and several police reports. Uh, they have visited properties, visited us and visited the bands that were playing. And, um, I think that, as proved, that the noise complaints were not necessarily justified. Uh, they did, were not passed on along to the licensing, the alcohol licensing board of East Hampton. Um, so I think that they were complaints and not necessarily justified.
Can I clarify that? On some of the police reports, it stated that they went up to the owner and you had shut down the music at that time, but most of the complaints that were for noise, the officers did not find it excessive. But when they did, they consulted, I believe, the owner and this was, well, these were back in August. So that was probably the buildup.
I believe if there was an excessive noise complaint, uh, the alcohol licensing board would receive notice regarding this. I correct me if I'm wrong, but.
Okay. I know.
That's sort of loud there.
Yeah. My sense in reading that was that initially, you responded immediately to the officers and then later, the officers made more notes than before and the notes indicated, again, wasn't excessive, wasn't excessive. But I, I remind that the, um, the health inspector said that even those commentary aren't scientific in terms of measuring noise, so we can't really.
Right.
All right, anyone have any other questions on the board? No? Okay. Sorry.
Can I just ask, so are you, so the neighbors are complaining there is noise and Fort Hill is saying, yes, there is noise, but it is not excessive noise. Um, they're not a completely silent operation. Um, so are you requesting either Fort Hill consider, um, some type of, of, of mitigation device or doing a noise study?
Uh, I don't think a noise study is something I'm recommending. Is that something any of you are looking for?
Mostly, I wanted to know what, where the noise that was given to us kind of came from. I don't think, I don't think we need a noise study, although we certainly could consider it, but I, I.
Well, I, I understood that some of the complaints that were in here were the neighbors saying that they could hear it through their doorways or windows.
Right.
Uh, I guess one woman complained that even she had her air conditioner on and she could still hear it.
Mm-hmm.
But how close they were to it, you know, proximity has a lot to do with it. So I don't know if we need to do an actual study.
I mean, my hope was that some additional plantings along that side road might just be a, a, a solution that would, that would help. But I'm not, I mean.
And we'd be happy to look into that as well.
Okay. Uh, so that's my feeling on it.
Yeah.
And my hope is that you might present something to us in that regard in the next meeting.
Yeah, just.
Um.
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay, any others?
I have one more.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
Go for it.
Uh, the technical memo mentions, uh, events, so I wanted to raise that as a question because the outdoor public activities proposal also says, such limitations shall not apply with respect to events or gatherings held for the benefit of East Hampton charitable or civic organizations. Um, so I would like to know more about what your plans are for, uh, outdoor events or gatherings. It sounds like you're intending to have them for the benefit of civic organizations. Are you intending to have events for other purposes such as weddings or private events?
Uh, we haven't had any such events yet, uh, but we don't want to necessarily limit ourselves as to if there is an opportunity to, um, be part of a cause. Um, for example, we were approached, um, by the, um, the chamber in East Hampton and we looked for, you know, the idea of having the beach ball at the, uh, brewery was an idea and we don't wanna necessarily limit our ability to host such an event. That was sort of the intention on that.
Thanks for the clarification.
I'm ready to, if you guys, I'm ready to hear from, from members of the public. Are you, are you all good with that? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we may call you up again to respond to, to some things, uh, that, that people ask, so stay nearby.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this issue? I see a lot of hands. I think I'm gonna start over here in the pen. We need you to come out of the podium and state your name and address. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's John Knybel, fourteen, uh, seventeen Fort Hill Road.
Can you spell, what's your last name?
K-N-Y, B as in boy, E-L.
Thank you.
Um, here we are again, over four years after the original planning board ruling regarding the operation rules and stipulations specific to the Fort Hill Brewery. At the zoning board of appeals meeting recently, residents of Fort Hill heard the opinions of many people from outside the Fort Hill neighborhood who thought the brewery and the changes it brought to our neighborhood were positive. Change was a reoccurring theme of the testimony heard that night. It got me thinking about why we have this permitting process. As I see it, when someone such as Mr. Berzens wants to start a new business, excuse me, i.e. change, the issuers of the permit, you folks, the planning board, take a look at the request and get input from residents and neighbors to figure out how the change will affect the existing neighborhood. It is further believed that the planning board would strive to limit any negative impact that is surrounding the community. Additionally, it is my expectation that the permitting process seeks to create limits within which a business can operate, thereby providing a clear understanding of the operating parameters for both the business owners as well as the residents. The goal of the planning board is to be sure that the new business is designed and adjusted to blend in with the existing neighborhood, whether residential or industrial zoned. It should not be the other way around where the entire neighborhood is negatively impacted and needs to confirm, conform to the new business. And just a, a note, it's totally unscientific about the noise issue. We were one of the problem, one of the people calling the police all the time. If you don't think it's excessive that you are in your own home with all of your windows up, eating supper, and you can hear the amplified music outside and not say that's not excessive, that's just my unscientific opinion, but that's what we're getting. And you can't gauge, you can't somebody, send somebody out there with a gauge, say, Eric, I'm coming out with a gauge, because that, that night, they'll have a, a quiet band. It changes all the time. One time, it's a guitar, amplified music, you know, the next time, it's a guy playing, strumming a, an, un-amplified guitar. So, uh, lately, the last, ever since all this brouhaha blew up, it's been not very loud. But this summer, we had the equivalent of rock bands out there. So, um, I'm asking for some consideration that if I can't be in my own house with the windows all closed all summer long and still hear his music when I'm eating my supper, when I come home on Saturday after working all day, I, I just don't think that's fair. And that, and that's why we're behind, that's why, one of the reasons why we're in front of you tonight. Thank you.
Okay, who's next? Please, come on up.
Do I need the microphone?
No, you're okay.
Just state your name and address.
Cindy Chamberlain, by Bartha Street. Um, I can understand what this gentleman has just said because I live, I know people don't think it's the same, but I live on Five Arthur Street and that is industrial residential. There's only a handful of houses on that street. I happen to live right near R and R and I've lived there for probably twenty-five years now. Every day, weekends, not, not on Sundays, but every day, I listen to car, big, huge trucks, constructions trucks, huge trucks go through. Guess what? I have learned to deal with it. It's part of what happens when you're living in a, a new, um, you know, a dual type of environment. We have learned to be respectful with each other. They slow down. Um, not all the time. You're gonna get jerks and people that drive on Fort Hill Road, you're gonna get jerks. Not necessarily people coming from the brewery, just people are, you know, not everybody is sensitive to being kind on the road. The, the noise, it's just something, I hear it all the time. Do, you know, I, I spend a half, most of the time, I spend outside in the summer. I deal with the dust. There's tons of dust. I have to dust my house like crazy. I have a lot of allergies. Those are things that you have to deal with. And just because there's six houses or in my street, there's, I think there's five houses on the street. Um, it's, it's a pain in the neck sometimes, but you know what? I feel that there's also assets that businesses bring to the community. And I know that Fort Hill Brewery is a huge asset. Now, maybe their neighbors don't enjoy it, but there's plenty of other neighbors that live in that area, including myself, including people that suffer there, that live down the roads where they have cottages, including people that live on East Street. And they really enjoy, I don't have to take a car down there. I can just go down there. The hours are totally reasonable. I'm sorry if at supper time at six o'clock, you hear a little noise, but maybe, you know, have supper at six thirty when they close. Their hours are certainly reasonable. As far as the decibel levels, maybe when they're outside in the summertime, you know, and they have a rock band, it's a little loud, but look, I, on Friday nights, I can hear Mill River or Mill Park. I can hear those bands every single Friday night, all the way down the bike trail. Do, do people complain about that? I don't think so. I just think that we need to learn to live with, um, things and that Eric has bent over backwards. And I'm sorry, I was very offended when Mr. Schubin here was kind of pointing fingers and saying that he's trying to be somewhat sneaky because I wasn't here then and, but whoever was at the planning board should understand the language. He also, they, um, this, rules change in, in the legislature and things have changed substantially. And businesses need to take advantage of those rules to have pouring permits. And he has a ten million dollar business. We should be supporting this. We should get along and the neighbors should, I don't understand it. You should get along with this. These are great people. This is a great facility. It is just, I can't say more about it. I just think, please, support this business. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Uh, I'll try pink again.
I'm Janie Thurber, eleven Fort Hill Road, East Hampton. This week in Time Magazine, there's an article concerning one of our presidential candidates. And the author used the word convenient truth, dodgy claims, incomplete information, and fabulous. Sorry to say, when I read that article, I was struck by how those words could equally well apply to our young entrepreneur here, Eric Berzens. His neighbors on Fort Hill Road find no way to equate his well-publicized popularity and goodwill with honest intention and above-board action. It's my intention to cite instances of Mr. Berzens' dodgy claims, convenient truths, and incomplete information. One of the most recent was his declaration on Facebook, September seventeenth, and again on October seventh, the day before the zoning board of appeals meeting, that Fort Hill Road neighbors want to shut him down. This has never been the case, not even with the problems that have developed since the outset of his enterprise, September twenty-eleven, when our support was wholehearted. We neighbors understood and appreciated the restrictions set by the special permit issued by this planning board at that time and we trusted unwisely, as it turned out, that Eric would grow hops, brew beer, and hold tasting tours, but not more. We do not want to shut him down even now. We want to hold him to the original regulations and to cease his ongoing expansion into activities restricted by that special permit. On October ninth, the morning after. On October ninth, the morning after the ro- recent zoning board of appeals meeting, I wrote to Eric and hand-delivered to the brewery a letter asking him to please retract these inaccurate Facebook claims that we want to shut him down. He's not retracting. Example two of dodgy claims. Mr. Berzen's contention that our lack of agreement stems from a mistake made when this board granted his original special permit. In an interview with a Hampshire Gazette reporter published in the Gazette on October eighth, Eric claimed, "The way that the special permit was written was a little bit wonky. The town sort of miswrote the special permit. It's both our mistakes that we didn't properly double-check it," unquote. Noteworthy then, that one of your board members said in the April twenty-eighth, twenty-fifteen meeting, and again on May twenty-seventh, then in twenty-eleven, he, the board member, I think I know now who he was, did remember, had no expectation that the brewery would be anything more than a brewery operation. He noted what has developed since then came as a surprise to him. He didn't appear happy with the development. Third example. Just because the state of Massachusetts made a new pouring permit available in twenty thirteen was not justification for Eric Berzen's operation of Fort Hill Brewery as a pub and entertainment venue, either before or after he acquired local pouring and entertainment licenses. Both of these later licenses contradicted the clear and explicit limitations set by the original and fundamental special permit the board granted Eric in twenty-eleven. Thus far, I've spoken of convenient but dodgy behavior. My remaining three points relate to questionable public perception. The first is claims by Mr. Berzen's patrons that Fort Hill Road residents are unable to deal with change. Change for all of us is a given. Worldwide, people deal with change on a daily basis and wouldn't surprise if it, survive if we didn't. Accepting some change is not the same as accepting any and all change. Those who attempt to deal with change reasonably and responsibly believe that adhering to agreements, whether informal and private, or formal and public, is crucial to a well-functioning society and city. When change involves vested competing interests, caring and careful respect of all parties is essential. That is what we, we the neighbors at least, as well as the planning board at the time, thought we had accomplished in the clear specifications of the original special permit of September twenty-eleven. Second point concerning public perception. Fort Hill Brewery is unquestionably a handsome structure. I remember writing Eric a note saying how incredibly beautiful it was, and he put plantings, et cetera, in keeping with the natural rural and agricultural character of Fort Hill Road. Even as one section of Fort Hill Road has long been zoned industrial, reportedly because of its proximity to railroad tracks, that years ago became the recreational man-hand rail trail. Hard to imagine the city allowing industry of a sort much different from a brewery, growing hops, to rise up on a currently agricultural land situated between a school and a residential zone. Other acreage further down Fort Hill Road, on the other side of Fort Hill Brewery, is already designated farmland. Fort Hill Road is nearly three-quarters of a mile long, virtually from the base of the Mount Tom Ridge to the entrance of Arcadia Wildlife Sanctuary, with seven houses on the side opposite the brewery between the Manand River and the Manand Rail Trail or East Street. Unlike East Street, three point five miles, and well-marked with speed, no passing, and school-crossing signs, unlike Clap Street intersecting at the other end, shorter and discouraging speed, whether potholed or patched, and unlike another shorter street, Arthur, also intersecting the Manand Rail Trail with some limited signage on it, and with industry at the, at both ends apparently of it. Fort Hill Road has the distinction of being fairly straight and relatively smooth. Both factors tempt drivers to speed. Anyone who argues that there is little need for speed signs or warning of the rail trail from both directions seem to be oblivious to potential accidents. The brewery is not the sole contributor to the need for signage, but it has greatly increased that need. The brewery, however, is indeed the sole contributor to the noise problem in Fort Hill Road. Unlike industry on nearby Arthur Street, the brewery currently operates during evening hours when residents wish peace and quiet on their return home from their own employment. And the brewery cooler is a constant source of noise at all hours, every day of the week. Finally, I worry that East Hampton prioritizes commerce, especially if popular and lucrative, over natural resources and non-commercial, commercial interests. Revenue from, from breweries and other businesses should rank high on a city's scale of economic priorities, as should public enthusiasm for local business enterprise. However, business enterprise and public enthusiasm for it are not the whole of a city's economy or identity. Excellent, though, East Hampton's water is for brewing beer, that water should be equally economically valued, along with fields, trees, and mountains, as great haven for wildlife, loved retreat for overly stressed humans, and future investment. Neither Arcadia's founders calling it a wildlife sanctuary, nor homeowners living near it or the Manand Rail Trail, made their choices casually. In encouraging and promoting its economy, our city, our city, should credit land stewardship and homeownership equitatively with business enterprise. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thurber. Um, I'm gonna ask the next person to come up now, but I, I just wanna note that, um, that was well done, but took about eight minutes. And if we have everyone, everyone do that, we're gonna be in real trouble tonight, so I ask that people please use brevity in making their statements, in the blue. I'm sorry, the, yeah, you're both in blue, that's trouble.
Melissa Knievel, seventeen Fort Hill Road. On September sixth, two thousand and eleven, the planning board met to review and discuss the special permit application for, of the Fort Hill Brewery. In attendance at that meeting were several of the neighbors that are here again tonight. Concerns raised that the meeting, uh, concerns raised at that meeting are unchanged. And unfortunately, due to, due to a series of events, our fears regarding the operation of the brewery that we believe to be addressed and protected by the special permit of two thousand and eleven have in fact become a reality. These fears, fears include issues with noise, traffic, and expanded operations of the brewery to include a retail pub. What was presented at that original public meeting in two thousand and eleven, which was demonstrated both verbally by the owner in his answers to specific questions, as well as his description of the planned operation of the brewery in his license and permit applications, were plans to operate the brewing, operate a brewing manufacturing facility. I would actually like to quote directly from the brewery's application to the Massachusetts Alcohol and Beverage Commission, as this reflects the owner's own words, as well as the message that was communicated during that two thousand and eleven meeting. In quotes, "The brewery will not be selling any beverages for onsite consumption. The brewery is devoted to being environmentally conscientious in all aspects of production and distribution of its products. The buildings to be developed on the Fort Hill property will be designed to be unobtrusively fit into the environment and be aesthetically pleasing. The brewing creates barely perceptible noise and certainly will not be heard outside of the brewery." If I can, I'd like to emphasize some certain words here from that quote. "Will not be selling any beverage for onsite consumption." "Devoted to being environmentally conscientious." "Unobtrusively fitting into the environment." "And creates barely perceptible noise." A letter from the planning board dated September twenty-eighth, two thousand and eleven approved the brewery's special permit for a brewing, in quotes, "brewery, manufacturing, and processing facility." It further stated that the facility will produce and bottle alcoholic beverages and may host tours, but will not include a pub or retail component. Based upon the above description, the planning board determined the project was suitable for the industrial district. The neighbors agreed with this decision. However, the operations of the brewery today do not fit that description. Both the brewery's intent, as outlined in its application, and the limits imposed by the special permit were in sync in two thousand and eleven. The brewery is clearly operating outside those parameters and has been all year. Many people have offered their definition of both retail and pub. The mayor, in fact, spent many hours with other staff and in consultation with the Alcohol and Beverage Commission, determining there was in fact a difference between a pub license and a pouring license. In this fact, there's actually no argument. However, in the context of the planning board, special permit, it's not in reference to type of alcohol licenses, but rather the parameters of the operation. As a means to offer more simple and exact definitions, I offer the following as defined by Webster. Retail, the sale of goods in small quantities directly to the consumer. Pub, a bar or tavern, an establishment for the sale of beer or other drinks to be consumed on the premises. The other piece that needs to be defined is component, 'cause the word in the special permit is component. A component is serving as one of the parts of a whole, a part or ingredient. So the exact definition doesn't necessarily have to be met with that word. I would offer that the current operations of the brewery where it is selling its beer directly to consumers meets both the definition of retail and pub. While the intent of the brewery not to sell beverages for onsite consumption as outlined by its original license application and planning board's special permit was true at the time, their intent has clearly changed. Just because the Massachusetts state law changed in two thousand and thirteen by way of creation of a pouring license, and obviously the, you know, the intent of taking the opportunity, and taking advantage of that opportunity, I can understand the owners would want to do that. However, it doesn't negate the limits imposed by the special permit issued by the City of East Hampton Planning Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? David, please.
Hi, uh, David Boyle, uh, Boyle Street. I'm in favor of the amendment. I've never been to any of the microbreweries at all. I don't drink very much. I don't know Eric. What I'm really concerned with is, um, zoning in general in East Hampton. Um, I'm pretty intimate with the zoning, uh, for a lot of reasons. And I don't think it's anyone's fault that we have a situation, 'cause we have friction, because we have industrial zone next to a residential zone. There's no transition zone. There's no form-based zoning. So from time to time, there's gonna be conflict. Um, I'm in favor of the amendment. I'm not opposed to the neighbors. I understand what's going on. Uh, if you go way back into that zoning, I mean, quite frankly, one side of the street being residential because that landowner wanted lots, the other side of the street being industrial because that landowner wanted, I mean, that in a sense wasn't planning, that was accommodation. And now that accommodation has led to what we have here. That being said, um, I'm really concerned about the city. Uh, I'm not speaking in favor of the amendment for the brewery as much as the city and integrity of the zoning. I think you can put conditions. I think you can put limitations, but I do not think you can restrict a business operation. And in this global economy, um, you know, Budweiser's been, is being bought out again, has a big impact on distribution. You can, um, Brooklyn beer can be sold in Italy, but can't be sold in Colorado. This is the stuff that they're faced. It's crazy. It's ridiculous. It's very good for the local economy to have local products. We're trying to get back to that. Um, I think so the planning board is challenged to find a way to be creative and allow this and accommodate the neighbors. However, East Hampton's had a little bit of a history of being hostage to neighborhoods. And I think we gotta be careful with that. We have to be sensitive to neighborhoods, but not hostage. Having three microbreweries in town is a big thing. And lastly, to wrap up, quite frankly, I don't really think it matters what the intent was in two thousand and eleven at all. That's all well and good. Things change. People change, ideas change. And I think you have to look at, you gotta separate opinions, even mine, from facts. This is headed to court, and that's, and the facts are gonna wear out, or, or bear out, so I think, that's not a threat, 'cause I'm not, I have nothing to do with this. But I can see what's happening. You gotta, you gotta concentrate on the facts with some sensitivity. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I'll go in back there a little bit next, okay?
People can form a line if they'd like.
Oh, if it comes to it.
Uh, I, I can do it. Thank you.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mo Beliveau. I'm the executive director of the Greater East Hampton Chamber of Commerce. I stand before you this evening in support of Fort Hill in their efforts to amend their special permit. As you work your way through the proceedings of special permit amendment for Fort Brewhe- Fort Hill Brewery, I ask that you consider the following. Fort Hill has become a shining example of economic development success story here in the City of East Hampton. As such, they have grown not, to not only a local destination, but as a regional, regional destination as well. Meaning, in addition to catering to our immediate community, they also draw in visitors from beyond our borders. Many for the first time, adding feet on the street and new eyes being exposed to all that East Hampton has to offer. All of this adds to the economic buzz, interest, and character developing here. Through this accomplishment, they have demonstrated to other potential interested investors that East Hampton is open for business. That in fact, business and entrepreneurialism is welcome here and can indeed thrive here. Thus drawing more business, thus leading to increased economic vitality, thus the cycle begins and continues. Fort Hill Brewery has grown, perhaps to their surprise, which means their business plan must grow as well. Business plans are not stagnant documents. They're kinetic, dynamic, evolving tools. Businesses that do not reflect on their business plan on a regular basis and evolve in response to their market will either wither, they will wither and die, and it's unrealistic to expect them not to do so. Fort Hill Brewery has not only become an important part of, of our community, but an important contributor to our economic landscape. I ask that you take into consideration these points that I raised, accentuate East Hampton's business-friendly atmosphere, and demonstrate our business agility and willingness to evolve. I ask that you grant the Fort Hill special permit amendment, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, and I apologize for the noise that you had. I'm just saying, I apologize for the noise you had in the background there.
I can do it again if you want.
No, you're, all right, I think there was a gentleman in blue here who's next. And address.
An address. Guyette, G-U-Y-E-T-T-E, and it's fifteen Deerfield Drive. So I just had some, um, just listening to everybody. Basically, I'm part of the noise. I play guitar there about once a month. Um, it's just me with a guitar. I've never seen any hassles. I've never seen police show up. I mean, I played outside on the patio. Um, I play amplified. I play plugged in. Um, but I think, for me, I play at a lot of breweries, um, wineries. And for me, what is the most astounding is I've never seen a place that closes this early. Um, so I think, based on just one of, that fact, they really are considering the neighbors and the sound. And also knowing that there's three breweries that have opened up in East Hampton, that's incredible for myself as a young member of the community, growing family. Um, it's really exciting to see East Hampton becoming what it's becoming. Hundreds of breweries open up in America all the time, and still they make such a small dent in what people are drinking. I mean, eighty percent of people are drinking Anheuser-Busch beverages. So to be a microbrewery is very difficult. Um, so if you're gonna have people coming to your establishment, you need to have something that draws them, and there has to be some form of entertainment. And I think if we squash something like this and stunt the growth of this brewery, it could really damage their business down the road. It's a very family-friendly place. I bring my daughter. She's two. My wife. My family comes up from Connecticut to meet us there and, and spend time, so it is drawing people from friends from Connecticut. People are coming to East Hampton for, for Hill Brewery. And I think it's a very classy establishment, and it's really the kind of establishment that any town would be very lucky to have, so I'll wrap it up at that.
Thank you. Did you go already? Come on.
Hi, note, Andy, the stuff right here. But there's only four lines that are highlighted that I'm gonna speak of, of that.
Name and address.
Uh, my name is Kathy Trueheart. I live at thirteen Fort Hill Road. I am actually... I'm four houses away from the brewery. I think that's correct. Um, the first thing I just- The first thing I just handed you guys was from Wikipedia about bar. It says a bar is also known as a salon or tavern or sometimes a pub or a club, referring to the actual establishment as in pub bar or club bar. Is a retail business establishment that serves alcohol beverages such as beer and wine. And then you go onto the second page and it says, "A beer bar focuses on beer, particularly craft beer. Rather than on wine or liquor, a brew pub is an onsite brewery that serves craft beers." That's what he's doing. So he is considered a bar. Now, what I want to say is when we first originally had a, went to the planning board, I was there, he stood up in front of all of us and he gave us a speech of what the, what it was going to be and how things were going to be. He said it was a family business. Sorry, I can't read with my glasses on that well. Roots in East Hampton community dedicated to equal opportunity employer. The brewery will employ localized citizens, local citizens and use the services of local professionals. The brewery will be sold by local retailers and serve in local bars and restaurants. The brewery will pay taxes, purchase water, and will pose only a small burden to town infractions, which is nice, you know? It's a nice establishment that East Hampton should have. It helps. And then later on, he goes to say brewing created barely perceptible noise and certainly will not be heard outside of the brewery. Last meeting board we were here, Mr. Corza had stated, "He hears the noise and he lives on East Street." Now, we live on Fort Hill. If we can hear it in Fort Hill and we're saying it's loud, he can hear it on East Street, that's a lot further than us. I would perceive that as loud, especially since it's coming into our homes. I do have an AC. My windows are closed and it does come into my home. It's not fair. The volume is ridiculous as far as I'm concerned. But I mean, it was a perfect example of noise. He even admitted he heard it right on East Street. I mean, you guys all had that last time told you. He said there would be no, the brewery leisure time, the brewery will not be selling any beverages for onsite consumption. That was all agreed on. So none of us said boo when it came in. We went to the meeting, we said, "Oh, that's great. We don't want a bar. We don't want loud noise." You know, it's a quiet neighborhood, it's the Arcadia. We used to see deer running across the street. You know? We don't see that anymore with the noise. Of course, you're not going to. It's a brewery. But we shouldn't have to deal with the bar atmosphere. He wants sixty parking spaces? That's going to make an impact on our road. Our road is maybe a car and a half length wide. My daughter was run off the road this summer by a car coming down the street because they couldn't fit, so she ended up going into the field. That's not appropriate. I've had people turn around and I got video of this because I videotaped the front of my yard, pulling into my driveway. And I asked one guy, I go, "Why are you pulling my driveway?" He goes, "Oh, I gotta stop for my, I got a phone call." And then he pulled into the bar. I've seen people turn around in my driveway from the bar. If that's not something, that's not affecting us, it is. I mean, that's my own property and they're coming in. You know, and like I said, our street's not wide. Come down and measure it. It barely fits two cars, barely. And when you have someone barreling the other way, you're going to go off the road because you don't want to get hit. Also, he sang that he never planned on making it a bar until this liquor license came through. But the same LLC, the same seventeen seventy-six brewing company LLC, he applied for the license in 483 Elliott Road, Centerville, Mass. And it was for industrial retail bars and lounges. And that was in 2010 before he came here. So I'm kind of wondering if he already planned on making it a bar but just said he didn't want it to be a bar. Because if you go online at a, I think it's another lawyer's thing, I can actually give this to you guys if you want it. So what's the difference? It's the same company, it's owned by him. He closed it then, but in 2010, and now he's got the same name. He told us it wouldn't be a bar or lounge, and it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to this side.
My name is Lori Reel. I live at fifty-one North Hampton Street in East Hampton.
Can you say your last name again?
Reel, R I E L.
Thank you.
My, my, my husband's family has been living here for many years. They have many generations in this town. And we chose East Hampton to raise our son. He's fourteen right now. We've been here for seventeen years, back in town. My husband back and forth over thirty-five years. My husband is a musician, a singer-songwriter acoustic, who plays plugged in amplified at the brewery. We've been doing so for about five months now. I've never experienced a tasting room or a brewery before in my life. I haven't really stepped in foot other than bars because it's where he generally plays, like the bars, like whiskers and whatnot. As far as a tasting room and the measurements of the room capacitating, I don't know if you said seventy-eight people?
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven? Oh my goodness. If you measure the bar that comes out from the room in the L shape, when I've been there for the past six months, I'm lucky if I see maybe twenty people comfortably fitting in there, standing or sitting. Most people go out on the porch. And then if they don't have room for that, they either get what they need to do and they leave. I think it's a great opportunity for our town, for the funding of our roads, considering I'm raising my son here. I like the comfortability of knowing the police department's on patrol. If I want to take a walk, let's say ten o'clock at night, because of breweries like this, paying the taxes to our town and our city, I still call it a town because to me it's like a town because it's small, it makes me feel safe at night, you know? And as far as the noise ordinance, are these substantial or hearsay? And if they're not supported by our local police department, we all have to follow the same rules. I live on fifty-one North Hampton Street, right at the traffic light for the bridge. There's all kinds of noise that I'm not used to over the past seventeen years because now that the bridge has been redone, there's a traffic light, there's a lot more traffic through there, a lot more noise. If my neighbor calls and complains, my stereo's too loud. And the police come and they don't hear that. Is that substantial or is that hearsay because somebody's complaining about it and trying to raise a heightened awareness to some kind of a noise that's, you know, might be bothering one person worse than it is their neighbor two, two doors down? I just think it's unfair that we're putting so much on the brewery. He shouldn't, I, I don't feel that Fort Hill Brewery should have any, any other restrictions as the other two breweries in town. On Pleasant Street, they got residential across the street. They may be in the back of the building. But we all got to, we all got to stay and, and like join together and be part of everything in order for everything to benefit from things. And if things evolve and change, I think that we have to embrace it with moderation if need be. And he's employing people in the local community as far as musicians. We just heard from another musician that actually lives in town too. And it's going towards our family and our growth and just as residents being here, able to vote and do the things we need, need to do, shop locally in town. It's so nice to be able to go local. And also for my husband to play locally. It's, it, it's a benefit. It's hard to find places for musicians to get paid and especially if they're, they're own songwriter. And I just think it's a great opportunity for everybody all around. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dave Lepine, 262 E Street. I probably have known Eric more than anybody else in this room.
Heard his song in Dampy.
I met Eric when he first came to East Hampton. We were introduced through Stuart Beckley. Got to know each other. I got more involved with him through the building process because he was new to the area. I've been involved with the building of Fort Hill Brewery from day one. I was hired as a general contractor. I sat through the planning board meetings. I understand what the gentleman said about what was put in at that point. And at that point, the goal of the brewery was exactly what it's doing. The manufacturing and production of beer with a tasting room. That's what the rules and the laws of Massachusetts were at that time. The tasting room was built, myself, Eric, his uncle, the architect, worked backwards and forwards on that thing, trying to make it as quaint as possible without taking away a lot of the office space, production area. It was never designed to be a barroom. It was designed to be a tasting room. Through time, as the building was being built and the brewery was being assembled, the laws have changed. They change all the time. I'm in development, believe me. If I can, I can tell you all about the changes and regulations and laws across the state. But are you going to burden a businessman by not giving him the same rights as anybody other in the brewing industry to apply for that pouring license as it becomes obtainable? Maybe at the point when it came up, this should have been brought to the planning board to look at the provisions of the special permit, to say, "Well, look, we understand at this point, these things weren't put in. You're coming to us for a change that's being granted to you by the state? Let's look at it at this point." You know, time goes by too fast and, and we all are busy and we all miss things. There's no professionals, politicians on this board, you're all volunteers. And I just want to, you know, make it clear that I, I know Eric. I mean, I've lived in this town my entire life. I know there's noise. I can hear Palmer paving at five AM in the morning when the, when the loaders fire up. I hear the bandstands down by the pond, you know? I hear the F-15s flying over, the C-5s, everything. You know, it's all noise that we hear. I'm just not quite sure, after the two meetings I've been to, exactly what the complaints of the neighbors are. I don't know if it's the noise, if it's the selling of pints of beer and T-shirts, if it's the people playing music out on the porch. I, I'm just not clear on what is really the essence here. I think all of those things can be easily dealt with. I don't think, you know, maybe it's a clarification of the amendment of what's, what retail is. Well, you can retail anywhere. You can go down to Skippy Peppin's farm, who is growing vegetables and retailing them there. You know, it's, I, I don't, it's such a clouded area that I think it's a great time for clarification as David Boyle brought up. You know, let's streamline some of these things and make them more positive and attractive for the companies and businesses that want to come into this town. So I just hope, like I said, that zoning, that we can all work together, clear up the gray areas, fix it, so everybody can enjoy their peace and quiet, which I enjoy on E Street whenever I can, so Eric can, business can continue to thrive, and we can all benefit from it. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to take a few more. We'll probably wrap up the public component at about eight o'clock. And it looks like we're, we're going to be continuing this.
I just want to note that the videotape, we have a two-hour.
Block.
Block and then, and then it will.
Yeah.
Cut off the meeting. So I think it would be.
Two more.
I think it would be prudent to try to wrap up before eight o'clock so that we can have the entire essence of the meeting on video in case it needs to be referenced in the future.
Let me see the hands again, please. Okay. So forgive me if I'm not calling out. I saw two hands here. So forgive me, sir. I'm going to go, you in the red and then I think that's Salem in the back. And I ask you both to go quickly. Please come on up.
Bert Thurber, 11 Fort Hill Road. I'm not noted for going quickly or briefly, but I'll do my best. It's our.
I apologize, sir, but our, our scribe didn't catch your name and we want to make sure we get it.
Bert Thurber.
Thurber? Okay. Sorry about that.
11 Fort Hill Road.
Thank you.
We believe that the request to amend the original special petition should not be approved. Certainly not in the increasingly ambiguous terms in which it was stated. The legalistic argument raised by the brewery is that the original terms, which are quite clear, explicit, and about which there are no doubt, are too ambiguous. In fact, they're not. The legalistic tactic here is to sow a notion of ambiguity where none exists. It is very clear, both from the documents themselves and the minutes of the planning board meeting and the memory of, as far as I know, the only member of your board was, which was a member of the original board, what the intent was. And we can play legalistic games. We can try to define or redefine terms. We can pretend that a bar is not a bar. We can pretend that a pub is not a pub, that retail is not retail. But common sense tells us, we all know the old adage, if it looks like a duck, it walks like a duck, it quacks like a duck. No matter what the ordinances or anything else say, it's a duck. And rather than playing legalistic games, we should in fact go about the commonsensical matter of figuring out what in fact was originally intended. And then the question becomes, do you wish, as some have suggested, to overrule your own decision in 2011 and come up with a new decision? I would suggest not. We in fact wish not. And there's a very simple reason for that from our perspective, and there should be another reason for it from your perspective. From our perspective, the reasoning is this, we simply do not trust Eric Barrisons. And if you grant an open-ended, ambiguous amendment to the original petition, he can and will use it as he has in fact used previous situations to his own advantage. Oh, he can claim that they didn't read carefully the original special permit and that that was sort of an error. Or he can later say that it was a mistake. Or when he's finally forced to, he can come, come back and seek an amendment so that, but what sort of amendment does he seek? An amendment that in essence says, "What I did," despite what you said, "what I did, you should now approve." And their members of the community think that's right. We do not. Eric in fact had restrictions placed upon him by a special permit. The fact that there was the creation of a pouring license in no way alters that. The fact that he went to the licensing board and got them to approve a pouring permit and later an entertainment permit without our even knowing about the hearings because of some flaws in the notification process, one of which by the way includes the fact that at a certain point he was required to state which of butters he thought in fact had relevant, would be relevant to the case. And he cited Tom Coziel and he cited the school, but he cited none of the neighbors. So we were not notified. We did not know of the meeting. We learned about it only after the fact. When he applied for a, an amendment to the special permit to have a beer garden, we came, we spoke out against it, he withdrew it. I was a little surprised he withdrew it at the time. The next day he comes to our houses, sits in our living rooms and tells us that he wants more communication, more cooperation between the neighbors and the brewery. That very same day, he goes and applies for an entertainment license about which he told us nothing. He needed that entertainment license because for three and a half months he had been entertaining. One of the nice things about Eric's Facebook page is that he regularly documents, he needs to appeal for more people to come. He regularly documents what he's doing. And he documents at beginning in January 31st of 2015, on a weekly if not bi-weekly basis, he has entertainment for three and a half months before he ever applies for an entertainment license. Just one other example that doesn't show up in the chronology. I pointed out that he goes to meetings, the very, immediately after sitting in our living room and saying nothing about them to us, and when we go to meetings, we actually call up Eric and tell him, "There's going to be a meeting, we think you should be there to represent yourself." Does he reciprocate? No. He just proceeds in his own manner. So from our perspective, there is no reason at this point we should trust Eric Barrisons. We do not wish an amendment to this, to this special permit that in essence retroactively condones his abuses of the original permit. Now, from your perspective, I should think you would feel the same way. Because what seems to, us to be at stake here is the integrity, the authority, and the efficacy of the planning board. If you can make a decision at one point and someone can go right out and in a short period of time exceed the restrictions you have placed upon him for what he can do, and then can in his own way get additional licenses to retroactively but not legally seem to condone the fact that he's exceeding the restrictions you placed on him, then what will stop him from in fact? You know, by the way, did you notice tonight when they made their requests, the hours expanded? The hours that he specified were already longer than the hours he operates now. And the, the pouring license actually allows him to function from eight AM in the morning until two AM the following morning, six days a week. Are we aware of that? So if you pass this. So, if you pass this, we're trusting that Eric won't do what he has already done so many times. Expand his ambitions, expand his operations. The original permit cited twenty parking spaces.
We're running out of time.
When he went to, when he went for the, when he went for the, for the beer garden, it was at thirty parking spaces. Now he's at sixty parking spaces. He's been quoted as saying, "I can in fact accommodate a hundred cars." This is not a person, his ambition, many of you seem to admire, and we all like his beer. But, the fact of the matter is, a person who operates with that ambition and without that form of honesty cannot be trusted to be given an open-ended, ambiguous amendment to the special permit. So we would appreciate that either you abide by your original special permit, which was very clear and specific, not ambiguous, about what the limitations were, or that the amendment in fact specify, and I mean specify.
We're now at eight.
Clearly what the limits will be.
At eight minutes, and you're the longest speaker here, sir. I appreciate it, but we need to let one more speaker in.
Thank you. Hello, planning board, I am Salem Derby, I'm a city councillor, and I live at fifteen West Few Terrace. Uh, for me, this boils down to three things. Uh, I think, one is, it's very understandable that the planning board in two thousand and eleven put in the narrative and not in the restrictions, some specific language that made sense with the current laws at the time. It makes sense that they would put in that there wouldn't be a pub. Um, and, and I think that there's so much interpretation about that, we can just leave that there. I would say, does the zoning allow the use that it is being used for? That's the question I would ask. Um, and I, I would say that yes, it does. And I think we all know, we all have, I mean, everybody here that has a neighbor knows that your, that your neighbor's house could sell tomorrow and someone could move in there, and they could have a rock band, and they could practice every day from seven to eleven, and what are you gonna do? What are you gonna do? And the, and the, the, maybe. But the reality is.
No, 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 you have to address the board.
The reality is, is right now in East Hampton, we don't have a noise ordinance, and there's a reason we don't have a noise ordinance. It's really difficult to enforce. So, um, you know, it's about neighbors coming together and figuring out a way to, to coexist. And since we all have neighbors, we all need to be, you know, actively working towards that. Um, and I would say, from what I've heard, while this is an industrial setting, the complaints are not that industrially based. Um, you know, uh, loud music is something that happens in residential areas all the time. Um, you know, people running their air conditioners could be loud all the time. These aren't specific things that are based on this industry that are the complaints of the neighbors. I mean, traffic, you know, our kid, I, all three of my kids went to Arcadia preschool. And guess what? We drove down Fort Hill Road every day. And, you know, I, I don't hear anybody complaining about that. And, and you can't really know which cars are which. The second thing, so that's the first one. The second thing is, I think equity has to be taken into consideration here. We have two other breweries in town, they're both open later. They both are operating under special permits that were granted for the buildings that they were in. They don't have to deal with any of this. Okay, they don't have to deal with any of it. And, they have neighbors. Um, there's residential on the third floor of, um, the one eighty building, where New City is. Um, and, you know, it's like if you think about Pulaski, or, or Millside Park, and you have, um, concerts on Thursdays, Fridays, you have art events. And I own a business there, and guess what? When they're playing loud music, I can hear it in my business. And we open up the windows. You know, we want to show that we live in a vibrant place, a place where stuff is happening. This is, I mean, that's great, and, you know, as far as the, the, um, the, the timing goes, the, the hours are so restricted. Uh, you know, everything wraps up at seven, or six. That's, that's pretty respectful. Uh, and I think the third piece of this is perception. And when I first became a city councillor, the perception was, East Hampton is not a business-friendly place. And when someone comes into our city and invests four and a half million dollars into a beautiful, which I think everybody would agree, it's a beautiful space that has endeavored to be respectful to the neighbors, but is trying to compete in a marketplace, what signal does that send other people that are trying to invest in East Hampton? That we might be beholden to a handful of neighbors who have an issue of things that are basically general residential concerns. Some noise, and limited hours, and maybe a little extra traffic, but really what more beyond that? I mean, you could go to, I, I mean, it, it's all about the, the specifics of the language right now, but that's not really what it's about. Right? And so I would strongly support amending this. And I wanna just be really clear, I don't think you're overruling anything that you've done. I think that as a board, you're amending something to bring it into line with the use that should be available to the owner in this space, what it's zoned for. Let's, let's be real, there could be some much more obtrusive uses of that property. And this one, I think, fits our community really well. And if we don't support that, that sends a pretty strong message, I would say. Thank you.
For the folks that didn't get to speak tonight, that wanna speak, I believe we're gonna extend this, uh, to next meeting, we've asked for a couple things.
Yeah, let, let's, hold on for a second. So, the two things that you've asked for is a site plan.
Right.
That needs to show the parking, um, and it also needs to show possible plantings on that side that the board was talking about. How quickly do you think you can turn around a site plan? Do you think that you would be able to have it available by the next meeting, which is November tenth, or do you need more time than that? Which would be the twenty-fourth.
Can I call my architect and engineer tomorrow and get back to you?
No, 'cause we need to continue the date now while everybody's in the room. So the date has to be set here and now. So, you need to make a decision now on whether you think you can have.
I think for the sake of getting this done as quickly as possible, I will try wholeheartedly to get it for the next meeting.
Okay, so if you don't have it on the tenth, then the hearing is gonna get continued again?
I will try.
Be understa- understanding that?
Okay.
Okay, alright.
And you understand the two requirements, as Jessica restated?
Is there any other information that the board is requesting of the applicant at this time that they need to provide for November tenth?
Nothing for me. Yeah?
Anybody else?
Chad, Harry? No? Okay.
Those are two major items that we need.
Okay.
The site plan with parking and possible plantings.
That's correct. Yeah. Do we need a motion to extend this?
Yes, you do.
Can I have that?
I move to extend the public hearing to the November tenth planning board meeting.
For a second?
At ten o'clock, at, uh, time?
At six PM. Uh, I don't know which room it will be in.
Here, preferably.
Uh, it depends on school committee. So, school committee has, has, uh, has the right to use this room on our date unless you wanted to pick an off-week date. So not being the tenth, picking either the first or the third Tuesday of the month, which would then make this room available.
I actually like that idea. Uh, how do you guys feel about it? Uh, we wanna give you enough time to do it. The dates that you, that you just mentioned were the...
So it would either be the third or the seventeenth, I presume the third would be way too quick. So I would suggest that maybe the seventeenth.
Seventeenth?
Which would provide the applicant one more week to get information together.
I'd like to make an amendment to make it the seventeenth.
Okay. So the motion is being amended. Was there a second? I didn't quite hear it.
No, not yet.
It's actually your motion.
Yeah, it's my motion.
Do you agree with that?
Okay, you're gonna amend?
So yes, we'll amend to continue the public hearing to November seventeenth at six PM in this room.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against, any abstentions? It's unanimous. To those that didn't get to speak, we'll try and make sure you get a chance at the next meeting. Thank you very much.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Alright, is there a second?
I'm second to that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against, any abstentions? Thank you, everybody.
Good. I agree.
That's all funny with, with, uh, Jesse's idea, right?
Your reporter, Masala, I'm wondering if I could take a look at that legal, uh, the, some of the documents that we're handing out this evening?
Hold on a second, I've got a big pile here. I've got the one that they gave out, which was, I think.
It was a legal addendum, legal memorandum, and then there was an addendum to the memorandum, if I remember hearing it correctly.
This is the addendum to the memorandum right here.